I'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order. Lisa, would you call the roll please?
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Snetzinger.
Here.
Councilmember Malika.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda additions or deletions from council? None? We will move on the agenda to presentations. Jim, the audit.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight we have Kristen Hughes from RSM US to go over the 2015 audit. And so I'll turn it over to her. Thank you.
Evening. How are you all? All right, we'll see if I can figure this out. Look at it. Oh, okay. Okay. I put together a PowerPoint. What it's going to do is, I think you should also have the city's CAFER, the Annual Financial Report, as well as our report to the Finance Committee. So I hadn't planned on going through those two documents in detail. The PowerPoint's going to kind of walk you through the highlights. But certainly if there's any questions you have as it relates to the documents, feel free to interrupt me or we can go through any questions at the end. Okay, so just a summary. And what I would say as far as the CAFER, obviously I know this is a large document to go through. But there's a couple of things that I would point out in the report, kind of consistent with what these first couple of slides are going to do with the year-over-year comparison. What I would kind of always point you guys to is, in front of the basic financial statements is the Management's Discussion and Analysis section. And that's management's, very similar to what it is up here, comparison of the 2015 results to the 2014 results. So again, that's kind of a good quick area, just a few pages to go through and look for any significant changes in the 15 results. And then also in the back, you've got your statistical section, which does more of a long-term history on things like revenue sources, debt, et cetera. So obviously in addition, you've got the basic financials and the footnotes. But those are kind of two other areas where you can go get some good historical information. So here on this slide, this is just a summary of revenue coming into the governmental funds, specifically all of the governmental funds. So here you can see 2015 results compared to 2014 by category. The most significant change would be in your tax revenue. So revenue in total went up about 2.1 million this year, 7%. And most of that is coming from your tax revenue, specifically your sales tax revenue. So if you just look at governmental revenue year-over-year, that's where you'll see the most significant change in 2015 results compared to 2014. Here you'll see your expenditures by functions again in the governmental funds. So you'll see expenditures this year were 29 million compared to 22 million in the prior year. Most of that increase, so that's an increase of roughly 7 million, and most of that is in your capital outlay. So that's going to be a lot of the construction projects that the city had going on in 2015 and still going on. One of the largest is the work being done on 112th Street. So like that is a $4 million increase in this year compared to prior year. In the report, you'll also see budget-to-actual schedules, where you can see how actual is compared to what were budgeted in each of the funds. Net position in the governmental activities. Net position is the same as equity. So here you'll see your three classifications of equity or net position that you have in the governmental activities. The blue category represents net investment in capital assets. So that's basically all of the equity that the city has invested in capital assets owned by the city. And you would always expect that to be your largest category. The green represents restricted, so those portions of equity that are restricted by a third party. So most of that is the city's Tabor requirement, the emergency reserve that you have to maintain. And then there's also a restriction for some parks. And then the yellow category represents unrestricted. So basically no restrictions, not in capital assets, and then no third-party restriction. So that's the unrestricted portion of equity that the city has specifically in governmental activities. What this slide represents, so the general fund, the city's operating fund, this compares, so similar to what I showed with the governmental activities. In the general fund, you've got your fund balance, which is also equity of the general fund. So you've got categories there, non-spendable, restricted, et cetera. And what this percentage is showing you is the unassigned fund balance. So basically the equity in the general fund that doesn't have any third-party restriction on it or council restriction, anything like that, and how that compares to expenditures. So some people find this to be a useful ratio. In theory, it represents, in theory, if revenue is seized, how much unassigned fund balance do you have to cover your expenditures that you usually have on an annual basis? So it's simply taking the unassigned fund balance divided into like what your 2015 expenditures were. So that's just a comparison of what that percentage is. So you have a pretty high percentage. I mean, that's a strong unassigned fund balance that you have compared to what your annual expenditures are. The next slide, this represents the other categories that I mentioned. I apologize, there's a typo in the large. That should be 94% instead of 57. So here's the various categories you'll see. 1% is non-spendable, which means the assets are in things like inventory, things that aren't going to generate cash for the city. The green category, 4% of the general fund's equity is restricted, so a third party. And again, that's mainly your emergency reserve that the general fund is required to maintain. Committed, that represents funds that have been earmarked by council. So that's 1% of the general fund. And then kind of similar to what you saw in the previous slide, the large majority of the general fund's equity is in the unassigned category, so available for any spending at management's or council's discretion. Here's the summary of the operating results of your enterprise funds, which would be your business-type funds like water and wastewater. So here you can see a comparison year-over-year of your operating revenue, 2015 to 14. So you'll see the operating revenue had increased in 15 along with operating expenses. The next comparison, the reason we kind of show depreciation expense is, in the fourth category there, you'll see net income excluding depreciation. Sometimes that's a more helpful comparison because depreciation expense will be a large expense in the enterprise funds because of all the assets maintained, but those are non-cash expenditures. So that's why that ratio is helpful sometimes. You can see what net income is backing out that large expense that isn't cash flow for the city each year. And then the last comparison there, you can see the enterprise funds present a cash flow statement. And you can see cash flows generated from operations. And so in both years from operations, the city in the enterprise funds is generating a positive cash flow, which is good. This slide here just kind of summarizes. The other document that you were provided with, as I mentioned, was the report to the committee. So that goes kind of through two main things. There's a couple of required communications that are touched upon. And then it's also just an overall summary of how the audit went. So first off there, you'll see that in the CAFER, we did give the city what's called an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest opinion that we can give on our audits, meaning the financials are presented in accordance with GAAP. The document goes through any accounting estimates. So as part of our audit, we take a look at any areas where there's components of management's subjectivity, basically transactions that involve estimates. And we take a look at those, and you'll see those concluded and summarized there. We're making sure that basically the process management has developed with those estimates seems consistent with what we would expect to see with other cities. Audit adjustments, there were none. That's something that I always like, that's positive to report. You know, we have a lot of independence requirements, and it's positive when we're not having to come in and propose a lot of adjustments or changes or bookkeeping, anything along those lines. So what that really means is the trial balance that the Finance Department provided with us is consistent with what you saw in the final issued reports. And so like I said, that's a positive. That's good to be able to report that we're not coming in and finding a lot of mistakes or changes that need to be made before your financial statements are finalized. The next item, there was just a couple uncorrected immaterial misstatements. So what those represent are a couple items that came up during the audit. I mean, you'll see the dollar amounts there. They were determined by management and us to be immaterial. So it was a couple items, and both of those are just timing issues. You know, like a payable that should have been accrued for in 2015 that wasn't. So the expense goes through 16, and so really it's just a cutoff and timing issue. But like I noted there, they're considered to be immaterial, so they're not recorded in the financials, but they're just summarized here for your, to be able to report to you. Also, you know, certainly if there was any disagreements with management or any difficulties that were encountered during the audit, that would be, you know, in this information, and we would be discussing that. There were none. Also in the financials, you'll see future accounting pronouncements. So you know, there's a lot of, the GAZB is passing a lot of standards right now. So you'll see those summarized in the footnotes, things to watch for in the future that might have an impact on your financials. You know, the big standard this past year was GAZB 68, which was the benefit, defined benefit for pension plans. That actually didn't have a large impact on you all because you're in defined contribution plans. But for a lot of municipalities that participate in the defined benefit, that's where they had to put the unfunded portion of liabilities on their financials. But again, that, since you all just have defined contribution plans, that actually didn't impact you all. And finally, what you'll see in the CAFER, the city does submit the CAFER to the GFOA to get the certificate of excellence. And so here in this, here's your report. You'll see the certificate that was received on the 2014 financials. You know, that is above and beyond. That requires a lot of information in the financials. So that's, I think that's always strongly encouraged, a bond rating agencies and things like that. That's something that they look at to see if you all are getting that certificate in your CAFER. So that's positive to be able to say that you all have earned that and you consistently earned that, and that's part of an additional review that your report is going through. Any questions? I know that was quick, so certainly if there's anything you want to go through in more detail, we can go through any questions you might have.
Questions? You did a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is public invited to be heard. Five minutes per speaker. Statements shall be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Would you sign in and give us your name?
Yes, my name is Serena Campbell. Sorry, I'm not a very good multitasker. I apologize. My name is Serena Campbell, and I am here with business regarding to animal control case 15-9. Can you guys hear me okay? Mayors, city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. On April 29, 2016, I, Serena Campbell, filed a formal complaint with the city clerk regarding case number Animal Control 15-9 in which Judge Majid entered an order to destroy my emotional support dog, Baby. I have yet to receive a response to my formal complaint regarding Northland Municipal Code 8-1-2 and Northland Municipal Code 8-1-4E. And I am confused as to why the concerns in my formal complaint have not been addressed by the city officials sitting here today. Northland law enforcement took my dog on September 26, 2014, after the door to his home was broken down and he ran to a neighbor's house. Originally, I was told by Northland law enforcement that my dog was impounded and held by the animal shelter based on the county charge against the former co-owner regarding a bite to the mailman on September 11, 2014. However, the county, who had jurisdiction over my dog, released Baby in February 2015. The county charge was the only violation pertaining to my dog. They deemed that he did not have to be destroyed for biting the mailman, which is the only time he has ever bit anyone, and it was deemed not a serious injury by medical professionals. Police Commander Lopez was angry that the county released my dog because he didn't like the former co-owner, so he told the prosecutors to open a case and hold a civil dispositional hearing. The former co-owner has since signed over his rights and given full ownership to me. The hearing was without jurisdiction because no one was cited with a municipal code violation. The court cannot hold a hearing to decide if your dog lives or dies if you have not been cited with a violation of the municipal ordinances. Northland ordinance 8-1-2 makes it clear that the municipal court only has jurisdiction to hold hearings arising out of alleged violations of ordinances. This did not happen in case number Animal Control 15-9. How can my dog be found to be vicious under Northland Municipal Code 14-2-9 when no ticket for a vicious animal was ever issued? I would like to know why the city has not investigated, the reason why the police, prosecutors, and judge opened up a civil case to decide if my dog should live when they had no jurisdiction to do so. I would like to know why the city has not responded to my filed formal complaint. I would like to know why I, in regards to my emotional support animal, who alleviates the symptoms of my anxiety and depression, was not afforded the right to a standard operation of judicial procedures. My dog has been held in the shelter over 600 days and counting, and there is nothing in the record, as municipal law also requires, as to why my dog was impounded in the first place. It has become apparent to me now that the city of Northland believes that because the dog has been impounded so long, that the only option is euthanasia. But I disagree.
You have one minute. One minute.
Okay. The city of Northland has been presented with the ability to allow my dog to be evaluated by an animal behaviorist in order to see if said behaviorist believes my emotional support animal for my service-connected disabilities is safe to be moved to a facility outside of the city's contracted animal shelter. There are thousands and thousands of dogs rehabilitated every year, dogs that have been in their cages entire lives, dogs that have never felt a human touch, thousands and thousands of dogs that have bitten. Why should my support dog be killed when the county with jurisdiction released him? Why should my family member and support animal not be afforded the opportunity to be rehabilitated? I brought copies of my formal complaint that I filed with the city clerk and would like to receive follow-up from the city officials regarding the content of my formal complaint within 10 business days. I also ask that based on the judicial errors found within the formal complaint, that the city approve an agreement to allow my support animal to be evaluated by a credentialed animal behaviorist, and if the credentialed behaviorist believes the dog is safe to be moved and rehabilitated, that the city agrees. It is not too late to do the right thing. This is not yet out of the city's hands. Thank you very much for your time.
Your time is up, so.
Should I?
You can give that, yes. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Please come forward.
Please sign in and give us your name.
Jeffrey Justice from Longmont. Mayor Downing and city council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I also want to speak in support of Ms. Campbell who just spoke. This case began on a dog biting a mailman charge on September 11, 2014 at a Grant Street address in Northland. I was a UPS driver for 14 years. This same thing happened to me on occasion. I was none too happy about it, but I had never seen any dog still incarcerated over a year and a half later. On September 24, Northland Police and Animal Control came to Ms. Campbell's home regarding the incident. They did not take the dog into custody or quarantine. You must have the records of this visit and the disposition of this case. Then on 9/26, three dogs were confiscated after an unrelated police action at the Grant Street home. Two were returned. However, the dog in question has been confined at Adams County Animal Control ever since. Why is that? What changed? What is the charge? I've been involved in numerous animal and police cases in the Adams County and Boulder County area for the past five years. I have never, ever seen or heard any case like this, a dog being incarcerated for this long. I'm confused. Are we in the wrong jurisdiction here? Is this not a Northland case? Do we need to address the Adams County commissioners? I've done that before. Just please tell us. I just ask that Ms. Campbell be informed by Northland officials regarding the legal reasons this dog has been confined to a kennel for this long. We can only leave this confusing case to you, Mayor and city council. Please give us some clarity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Yes, Mayor. Would you please sign in and give us your name?
My name is Leanne Liu. I'm a resident of Westminster. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd just like to reiterate what Serena Campbell had said. Serena Campbell's a disabled veteran. This dog named Baby is her emotional support animal. She relies on this dog. She has served her country, and I think that she deserves fair treatment. It seems to me that the way she and her dog have been treated has been very unfair. The city of Northland did not have jurisdiction over this animal, and yet he has been impounded. And it's been impounded going on for over a year and a half. This is inhumane to do to an animal. So we would like to request that the city of Northland allow this dog to be evaluated by behaviorists, moved out of the kennel so that he has an opportunity to express more natural behavior and to go home. It seems to me that no laws were broken, you know, according to the city of Northland's municipal codes. So on behalf of many other concerned dog owners and citizens, we are all astounded as to why this dog has been impounded, let alone for so long, and let alone been sentenced to be euthanized. So I just want to express my concern for what is happening to Serena Campbell and to her dog, and respectfully request that the city of Northland hear her formal complaint and show leniency towards this animal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like, yes? Would you please sign in and give us your name?
My name is Dan Brinkley, and I own a rescue and a shelter in Aurora in unincorporated Repel County. I do not know the, personally know the people involved with this, but I do know about the dog. I have, in the last couple of years, in the last four years, I've taken five dogs that have come from, had been confiscated in court, and we have taken custody of those dogs until everything is straightened out. I am a licensed shelter. I am a 501(c)(3). I brought that stuff with me. And I am offering to take this dog and hold it at no charge, diffuse the situation, and give him a more humane place to be, then locked up in a kennel 24 hours a day. It is not mentally or physically decent for a dog to sit in a kennel for that long. We are required, as a shelter, we're required to have dogs have outside time. I'm offering to do this for the sake of the dog. This whole case, just, I'm sure all of you have heard of Lennox in Belfast. It just is beginning to roller coaster into a situation like that. So I have talked to the attorney. I've offered our services. And I hope that Adams County and Northland will take us up on the offer.
Thank you.
Sorry, I put my address.
No, you're fine. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Summers. I'm from unincorporated Jefferson County. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Serena Campbell. I am an owner of a dog who was impounded for a long period of time. He was impounded for eight months, was deemed dangerous, was not my original animal, and was set to be euthanized. I did acquire him. He is a loving family pet. How an animal acts behind cage is completely different when they're out and when they're able to be rehabilitated. I beg of you to please read and respond to her complaint and give Baby a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, yes?
Hello, Mayor and council. My name is Greg Smith. I live in Littleton. And I just, I think I'm probably echoing some things here, and maybe, maybe I'm the last person on this subject, but I think it's important. And it's important because this is not just one incident. It kind of speaks to a larger, a larger thing that's going on. But specifically, this is a disabled veteran who has a dog that she relies on for emotional support. But also, this is family. It's been incarcerated for over 600 days. She spent a small fortune to keep this dog alive. This isn't done to prove a point, to be right about something. It's not hubris. It's very simply love, right? So my request to you is let logic and reason guide you through this complaint. Read it and seek to understand, and please give the dog a chance. I think it deserves it, and I know that our veterans do and people that love dogs and rely on them as family, they deserve that too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Come forward.
My name is Stephanie Klett, and I'm a board member with a local animal rescue based out of Aurora, Colorado. I live in Wall County. And I just want to echo what they've said regarding Serena Campbell's case. This dog, it's unbelievable that he has been incarcerated for this long. Working with dogs as often as I have, I do rescue, I do fostering for these type of dogs. And the situation of being locked up for over a year and a half is detrimental. It is inhumane. It is an injustice, not only to the dog, but to this in-person individual, to the dog who has no charges against it, has done nothing wrong. So I just ask that you would please listen to her and do the right thing out of your hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Seeing no one approach, I would ask our city attorney to respond to these questions.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, and this case is currently involved in litigation. So rather than advocate, I'm just going to identify some of the facts. This is a dog named Adolf that attacked a postman and was determined to be vicious by the Northland Municipal Court. I know you've heard statements about a lack of jurisdiction. The Northland Municipal Court determination was appealed to the Adams County District Court. The Adams County District Court affirmed, in other words, agreed with the decision of the Northland Municipal Court. The Adams County District Court's decision was taken up for review to the Colorado Supreme Court. The Colorado Supreme Court denied cert, in other words, denied review. So there was a final judgment from the state court in Colorado. Ms. Campbell, through her attorney, has subsequently filed litigation in federal district court seeking to essentially stay the decision of the state court. That case is pending, and Northland has agreed to essentially stay the state court proceeding until the federal court proceeding resolves. But so far, every court that has reviewed the decision of the Northland Municipal Court has found that it was, it had jurisdiction. To the extent that you received a formal complaint, you certainly have the authority to make a determination or not make a determination. I would just note that Ms. Campbell has elected through her attorney to file litigation in federal district court, and that's where the case currently is pending.
Thank you, Cory. Okay, we'll move on the agenda then. Next, we have the consent agenda. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to resolutions. First one is CR 57.
CR 57, a resolution accepting the audit of the comprehensive annual financial report for the city of Northland for the year ended December 31, 2015. Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. CR 57, again, is a resolution which would accept the auditor's report that you've been providing in your packet and that you heard verbally tonight. verbally tonight.
Discussion. Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed and CR-57 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR-58.
CR-58, a resolution approving the city of Northland final HEAL Cities and Towns Food Access Assessment Report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to have Brooke Spaboda and possibly Becky Smith come up and answer some questions about this, this project and do a short discussion. Essentially, there's a report that's included in your packet. There are eight recommendations, which we included in the cover memo, that talk about this document being a policy guiding document. And so the resolution that's in front of you tonight would actually adopt this as a policy guiding document. There would be subsequent discussions, study sessions, possibly legislative action to implement some of these ideas. But the recommendation is that the resolution be approved.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just, I need to recuse myself because this is a client of mine.
Oh, thank you. Is Brooke or Becky here? Or both?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We didn't have anything prepared tonight other than to answer questions that anybody may have on the heat item tonight.
All right. Are there any questions for the Brooke or Becky? Kyle?
I just want to say that I'm really proud of Northland and what staff has done on this. I think that we're really taking some positive steps to make our community a healthier place. And kudos to you all and the staff for doing this. So, thank you.
And I have to echo that. This is exactly what I was going to say. I am happy to adopt this as a policy guiding document. I think you guys did a lot of work on it. There's a lot of really important information in it. And I love it. Keep on going with this campaign. I really like the whole HEAL idea here in Northland. So, good job.
Any other comments or discussion?
Thank you very much. You did a great job with this presentation.
Thank you. No PowerPoint. I know.
No PowerPoint, sorry.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed and CR-58 passes unanimously with a recusal by Councilmember Whitman.
Thank you. Next is CR-59.
CR-59, a resolution approving a professional services agreement between the city of Northland and IDOS Architects for engineering, design, and construction administration services for the Rolston House project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Resolution 59, the city of Northland in coordination with nine other cities as well as the Rolston House are developing a child advocacy center near the water treatment facility. And the first step in the new facility construction is, of course, to design it. So the contract that is in front of you tonight is for the architect. There's some details about the procurement process that we went through. And if the resolution is approved, it would authorize the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Northland and IDOS Architects in an amount not to exceed $146,520, which will include the base facility design as well as the fire sprinkler design and also authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to approve any change orders up to the approved expenditure limit of 10% or $14,652 during design phase and then $7,326 or 5% during the construction phase for a total expenditure of $168,498. And I just want to remind the council, we're not doing this alone. There's an intergovernmental agreement between us and these other entities requiring that they participate in the design process. Each entity is agreed by that agreement that they would contribute $30,000 towards the project. So that will far exceed our total amount of this design contract. We still need to work out some of the agreements with the construction descriptions and how we're going to split that up. But we did go ahead and formally notify all those jurisdictions last week. And I've also informed most of the city managers that I've run into at the meeting last Friday. Mr. Willet is here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Discussion? Kyle?
I just want to, again, echo what a great job staff has done on this project. I think the Rolston House is an amazing cause and I'm sure all of us know what they do and the great things they bring to the community and things they do for children. I just want to take this opportunity to also, you know, talk to our fellow communities that are involved in this and thank them for being involved in the design process, but also encourage them to take the next step with this once this is done as well, because I think this is going to be a great thing for Adams County. And so, so I just want to let that be known.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, I've just, this has been a project that we've been working on for a couple of years now. And it's taken much longer than what I would have hoped. It seems like a lot of our good projects in the city do take longer than what I would like to see them happen. IDOS Architects are, they're a great firm. I know several of the folks who are there. They've done some really, really neat work in affordable housing as well and some other kind of nonprofit type organizations. And I think that we're going to be very happy with them. And I just want to see this project done. And so I'm really excited that we're finally moving forward. And like Kyle said, hopefully our fellow jurisdictions will keep in the game and we won't have any more delays on this one. So, very happy about this.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone else?
And I do echo everything Kyle has said. This is going to be a great facility. It's going to be a great asset, not only for Northland, but Adams County. And it's going to help, most importantly, the children. So, thank you. Any other discussion?
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed and CR-59 passes unanimously.
Thank you. I will now recess the regular council meeting and bring to order the marijuana licensing board. Lisa, would you call the board, please?
Mayor Downing.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dodge.
Here.
Councilmember Snetsinger.
Here.
Councilmember Mulka.
Here.
Councilmember Sowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Escobal.
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from April 11, 2016.
Move to approve.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed and the minutes pass unanimously.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a request to continue the public hearing on a new license application. Washington Point Management LLC doing business as Grow House Northland. Cory, did you want to-
Madam Mayor, this application has been in front of you a couple of previous times. And what you have is what is promised to be one last request for a continuance based on the fact that the legal counsel for the applicant can't make the previous date to which this was continued. Certainly, there's no prejudice in continuing it from June 27 to July 11. And it is your discretion whether or not to approve the continuance.
Thank you. Discussion?
I move to grant the applicant's request for continuance of the public hearing on the retail marijuana business license application filed by Washington Point Management LLC, DVA Grow House Northland to July 11, 2016.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion? Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have the retail marijuana license renewal application, AJO Holdings LLC doing business as Natural Selections. Cory?
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a renewal for AJO Holdings LLC doing business as Natural Selections located in Huron Center. Tonight, essentially, you have two options related to the renewal request. One is to approve it. The second is to set it for a hearing. The idea being that if you are concerned about what is in the record and want further information in a quasi-judicial capacity, then you would have to set it for a hearing. You do have in your packet, among other things, a stipulation agreement and order that was entered into by the licensee with the state of Colorado. It is that stipulation agreement and order and the circumstances surrounding that that are the reason this is on the agenda and cannot be renewed without coming before you. The licensee is here. So if you have questions, you are certainly, he can certainly respond to those questions. And from that, you can determine whether you're satisfied with those responses or whether you want to set it for a contested renewal hearing.
Thank you. Discussion? Kyle?
Can we hear from the licensee?
We can. All right.
Chris, I didn't-
It's okay.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Aidan O'Donovan, owner of Natural Selections. Most of you guys know me already. And for those who don't, I look forward to meeting you and, you know, getting to know you and working together in the future. As I'm sure you know, I'm here tonight for the renewal of my business license. You know, as Cory just explained, I think normally in Northland, our licenses have been renewed automatically unless a violation occurred, which is the main reason I'm here, is to explain that, as well as to discuss a, what they call modification of premises. As usual, I'll be reading from my sheet. Public speaking is something I struggle with. Feel free to stop me with questions at any point, though. So to give you an idea of what happened, under Colorado law, when starting a cultivation facility, a licensed cultivation facility is supposed to acquire its initial seeds and clones from another licensed cultivation facility, you know, properly document the transportation manifest, tag the plants, enter them in the state tracking system, which is called METRIC, once they're over six inches tall and at their final destination. Just as a reminder, my three licenses are, well, four licenses are, the dispenser here in Northland, the medical and retail side, as well as a retail cultivation facility in Boulder and a medical cultivation facility in Denver. So when we began our cultivation process last July, what happened was we purchased our seeds and clones from other dispensaries, but not being aware that we were to get them from the dispensary warehouses with the transportation manifest, we got them from dispensary storefronts and without the proper documentation. You know, we properly tagged the plants and, you know, once they reach six inches tall, everything's RFID'd, weighed and documented at every stage as required by law. The METRIC, it's a very, you know, it's incredibly intricate and thorough system of tracking. And everything we did from there forward was done correctly in the months that followed. However, we lacked the proper documentation for the initial source of seeds that were brought to the cultivation facility on the very first day of operation. So everything from there forward was done in full compliance. And we genuinely believe that our, you know, our only, our main obligation when starting a cultivation facility was to tag the plants to six inches and enter them into the system, the METRIC system, and track them through the sale from there. In the eyes of the Marijuana Enforcement Division, however, the initial source of the seeds was, you know, because of the lack of manifest, was technically outside the regulated system because of our lack of documentation on the first day of planting. So that single incident resulted in seven violations, you know, and I'm sure you have a lot of them in front of you, having to do with, you know, the proper use of METRIC, proper use of inventory, proper record keeping, because we didn't have records for those seeds. Because we began our medical cultivation facility the same way, those seven violations doubled to 14, pretty much all based on the same accident. So unfortunately, you know, after the MED's investigation, we were forced to close our doors while they took a closer look. And because the storefront's under the same licensing structure, we were forced to close there as well. After waiting many weeks, I mean, months really, we were finally able to have our case heard. And, you know, it seems like they now kind of recognize that we didn't intentionally violate the code. It was, you know, we just made, you know, simply made a mistake in our initial propagation at our cultivation facilities in the very first week of starting them up. There's very few aggravating factors and, you know, many significant mitigating factors in play as well. You know, during the, during the initial investigation, we went to great lengths in, you know, getting, getting them everything they needed, being cooperative. We actually updated, we spent $70,000 on a brand new state-of-the-art security system so that they could have better, you know, and our security system was compliant before, but this one is tip-top. Anyways, after a large fine and a suspension, we're finally able to get back open a few months ago. Up until 2013, it wasn't specified in the law where new cultivation facilities were to get their initial seeds from. So actually, believe it or not, the vast majority of cannabis businesses who all started before then, you know, everybody else, they weren't required to document their seeds. I was genuinely shocked upon learning that we had violated this rule. I didn't know about it. I should have. And I've tried to warn other new businesses not to make the same mistake I did. That being said, I take full responsibility. And, you know, I'm not trying to deny that this violation occurred. I'm very sorry for what occurred. And, you know, I want to apologize for letting you guys down. Having always prided myself on being a stickler for compliance, I deeply regret that we made such a consequential mistake. And for the effect that being closed had on our employees for that period, our patients and the customers as well. Fortunately for us, we were able to offer every employee their job back when we got reopened a couple of months ago. We have 21 employees now. And with the exception of one who found a new job, you know, way closer to our home, everybody else came back and is currently working for us. Additionally, our customers and patients have been coming back as well. We're excited to be back up and running. Sales haven't gotten quite back to where they were, but I'm confident they will, hopefully by, you know, by the end of summer here. Since we reopened, we've hired two separate third-party compliance auditing companies to inspect our facilities bi-weekly to make sure everything's, you know, in full compliance. And so far, we've passed their inspections with flying colors, as well as those performed by the actual Marijuana Enforcement Division, the state investigators themselves, of which there have been several. So technically, it would be impossible to repeat our violation, you know, as our cultivation facilities are now properly populated. But it's of the utmost importance to us to ensure that no other kinds of violations occur in the future. While certainly a valuable learning experience, you know, this whole ordeal's been very tough for us, both financially and emotionally. And, you know, this is kind of the final step in putting it behind us and moving on. We're also excited about the progress being made at the Huron Center. With regards to the Huron Center as a whole, I know that's been excruciatingly slow and incredibly frustrating at times, but it seems like it's finally, seems like it's finally coming all together. And we're in talks to commit a substantial amount towards the project, you know, for that longevity. I truly believe that once the beautification process is complete and the space is filled, it's going to be one of the nicest shopping centers around. And, you know, I'm really looking forward to that as well. So the last thing I want to discuss is a proposed slight change in our business structure wherein we will be serving both medical patients and retail customers from the same registers. So as a reminder, we have two cultivation facilities, the retail in Boulder and the medical in Denver. Production's been going well at the retail in Boulder and we're able to keep up with the demand on the retail side. But at the Denver warehouse, it's just been one issue after the next. We've been having a lot of problems with the heat and the HVAC, as well as electrical issues that have been slowing down production. So financially, it makes way more sense to sell that site and adjust the licensing accordingly. Under medical code, it's confusing, but under medical code, a company can be punished for not meeting vertical integration requirements. For example, I know that a few years ago, there's a company, actually Botanic Care, right down the street here, that was suspended for, I think, eight or nine months due to infractions for the 70-30 rule, which is on the medical side that stipulates vertical integration requirements. Obviously, especially what I've just, you know, since, given what's transpired that I just described to you, this is a situation we're intent on avoiding. So what I'd like to do is sell that warehouse and adjust the dispensary registers. For the patients and customers, nothing will change. Unlike in the past, you know, most infused product companies are now manufacturing both of their products for retail and medical inventory. So by doing this, it's not, we're not going to be carrying anything different. It's more or less a bureaucratic change in our inventory. So more and more medical customers are now not bothering to renew their medical carts as they're over the age of 21 anyways. And the products are now more, you know, more and more similar on both the medical and retail sides. And medical carts are expensive to renew, you know, so it makes sense. They can just go into the store anyways and get the same products. So we'll be offering the same products and pricing structure to all of our medical patients, but we're going to be asking them to shop at the retail registers, which creates for a much more streamlined, much more streamlined business and inventory process and leaves much less room for error. Medical marijuana laws are under a different regulatory framework than retail, and it's starting to make more sense to serve both patients and regular customers all under the same framework. I've already submitted the necessary paperwork for this to the state, to the MED, and have been approved by them to go in this direction. So to conclude, you know, thanks for taking the time to listen to me tonight. And as always, you know, I'm available by phone, by email to address any questions or concerns that you guys or the town residents may have later or right now.
Questions?
Madam Mayor, if I could, just to clarify one thing.
Yes.
The only thing on the agenda tonight is the renewal.
Right.
About that we're talking about the month these are premises?
No, the modification that is requested would only come before you if the license is renewed. So the only thing before you tonight is the renewal.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Is there any question?
So is this your, I can't remember, sorry.
It's okay.
Is this your, this your first venture in this whole?
Yeah, this is my first venture into this, into this industry. And this is, it's heartbreaking, but this is something that occurred when we, on the very first week of being open.
You made a rookie mistake.
Yeah, I made a rookie mistake. And I'm not trying to play it down. I want to own it. But it's not, it's not, I want to make it clear that it's not- I want to own it, but it's not, it's not, I want to make it clear that it's not as though something's been ongoing, that, you know, something's been recurring out of compliance.
Nine. Kyle?
Are you positive? Because I even raised my hand.
[laughing]
Your compliance auditors, are they outside auditors or the employees of you?
Yes, so they're actually, they're actually ex-MED employees, and they were grandfathered in to start their business. The Marijuana Enforcement Division started having an issue, believe it or not, with, with people leaving them to go do this, because they can make more money. And these companies were grandfathered in before the MED actually stepped up and said, I think they now require two years in between when an employee leaves the MED and starts working in the private sector. But, you know, the companies that we've hired are approved by the MED and are actually ex-employees of the MED. So they, you know, they come around, they have, you know, very thorough processes, and they, and, you know, check up on everything and generate reports.
And are those results filed anywhere besides with you?
No, they're filed, but I can, I can absolutely provide them. Yeah, but they're, they're all filed privately.
Yeah, right, so.
Yeah, the point is kind of, you know, if they were filed publicly, then, you know, if they found something, then we would be, you know, they wouldn't be able to sell their services at that point, because.
Right, but I also, you also understand where I'm coming from, right?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
It's a new venture, a new industry that's up and coming.
Yeah, definitely.
And my concern with your comment about the compliance auditors is that, you know, there isn't a standardized format for a compliance auditor this time.
Yeah, there's not. Both companies have vastly different ones.
Exactly, so if we were to request a copy of your audit, you'd be able to provide it with any, without any problems in any kind of timeframe?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, it might take a week or two, but, but yeah, I mean, I know, no, I mean, we have it filed at the store, I'm pretty sure, so.
Okay.
Kyle?
So, Aiden, I totally understand what you're saying with the mistake that you made in the way you purchased the seeds. I do have some concerns, though, in section six and seven of the violations.
Okay. I don't have it in front of me.
The six is basically saying that you destroyed approximately 300 marijuana plants subject to administrative hold.
Yes.
While the administrative hold was in effect. That sounds obviously very concerning to me.
Yeah, I know.
And then the other one was that you were possessing more than the six medical marijuana plants, and the license, the medical license wasn't there, or the person's, you didn't hold the person's card or something.
Yeah, so I'll start with the first one. So, and that's all related to the hold, which was related to the seeds. So what happened when they, when they discovered this is they came through the cultivation facility and they said, "We're putting everything on administrative hold," and it was, it was explained to us very poorly what that meant. They said, "You can't transfer anything out," and we didn't, but they said you can, they actually, you know, the document that I wish I had in front of me says, "Licensee has agreed to destroy this inventory." They said you can transfer new product in, not product, but you can transfer new seeds in. So what's, you know, what, what we did was start making room for new seeds that we were going to bring in, and destroyed, you know, those 300 plants all sat on, you know, they were tiny, tiny low clones, they all sat on one, you know, one, maybe four by eight, four by eight rack, started destroying those to make way for new seeds. And then one employee said, you know, you know, the one investigator said, you know, maybe we weren't supposed to destroy it. So I immediately called the investigator. He said, "I'll be right over." He came, he took pictures, asked for the video footage, provided the video footage of those being destroyed, and, and that was that. You know, I mean, it got added to the list of violations, but it again, you know, we would have never been subject to administrative hold if it weren't for this initial violation. And everything was on camera, we weren't, you know, we would have no reason to be destroying plants and, you know, for, I don't even know what kind of bad behavior that would be, but you know, it was, it was an attempt to make room for new incoming plant material, and ultimately, it was, it was also a mistake that, that led to more violations. So, you know, the seeds caused everything, and then, once we started, just dug ourselves in a hole. With regards to the second one, and that's also something that I didn't address in here, so that's the only one that's not really related to the seeds, but it's also a rookie mistake in the very first, very first week of starting up, where it's a very confusing system, wherein the, the, when you're, when you're medical only, and again, this can't occur anymore because of the retail license, and, and we're allowed to have, you know, unlimited product on site as much as we can safely fit in our safe room, but when you're medical only, which we were for the first few weeks that we were open, we were under the impression that you could, you know, once the license was in place, once you had your local license and your state license, you could purchase product wholesale and open your doors. Now, the way it's actually supposed to work, which I've learned, is that, and this is another reason why it's, you know, why we're going in this direction of everything under the retail licensing structure, but the way it's supposed to work is you're supposed, it's kind of a chicken and egg problem. You can't, you're not supposed to possess product without having patients signed up to your dispensary, but you can't have patients sign up to your dispensary without being open. So what they told me that new medical companies are doing, and again, this would never have applied to any of the companies that opened before 2013, but what the new medical companies are doing, and there's a handful of them, are opening their doors, inviting people in to check out the aesthetic and the, you know, the shop, the shop without having any product, getting them to sign up, then going out, buying the product, and then selling it to the medical customers. Does that make sense? It's, it's a, it's kind of a bizarre system, and the medical code was, when it was written, it was all based on the, that 70-30 rule, those vertical integration requirements when they wrote the retail marijuana code. I think they, they created a much more streamlined, much more sensical process, and, and it was way more straightforward, and that's, that's another one of the reasons we're, we're trying to go in that direction. But ultimately, that, that was, that was one of the violations that wasn't really discussed in our back and forth in our briefs with the Attorney General's Office and with the Marijuana Enforcement Division. I think that, you know, it's kind of like when you get pulled over and, you know, they tag on, you know, construction zone and et cetera, et cetera. It was really the seeds thing that kicked it all off, and that I think really antagonized them initially.
Any other questions? Yes.
Corey, I would like to ask you, do the state marijuana code and regulations, do they address how many times you can have your license suspended before it's irrevocably revoked?
The answer's no.
No.
There is, I mean, you could theoretically have a number of minor suspensions, but ultimately, it is discretionary with both entities in terms of what is the severity of an offense and how it works.
So typically, you could keep fixing your, your problem, they reissue the license, and we reissue, and it's okay, and if something else comes up, you get that chance endlessly, is kind of what you're saying?
Well, I wouldn't say endlessly, I mean, each time is an aggravating circumstance, so it's similar to the liquor code in that sense.
I'm actually on, so I should, I should note that, that we're on a probation period for a year with the state if we have any violations, and they're coming through very regularly. If we have any violations at all, we'll be shut back down. There's, so, and that's, that's, that's a product of our stipulation agreement order. That's not necessarily the case with another license, you know, if some, if another shop down the street got in trouble, it'd be a totally different, you know, every, every situation's different, but for us right now, we are on a one-year probation where.
So really, Aiden, I would just like to say that I have always appreciated your honesty coming in here. I think you definitely entered in to this, you didn't come in with your money flowing out of your pockets like you were just going to make money.
And we still haven't made any money.
You learned as you went along. So I appreciate all that, I appreciate you coming forward and explaining everything to us tonight. I think it was an expensive lesson for you, for sure.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm definitely forgiving you another chance, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, Aiden.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm going to be the nag at you tonight, I guess.
No, please.
So, I've heard rookie mistake, didn't know that, all that good stuff, right? And I know that you've taken the action of getting the two compliance auditors, but it seems to me, just by listening to you talk, that there's possibly some education that you failed to follow up on, on your side, so that this wouldn't happen. So what are you doing at this point to make sure that moving forward, we're not having the same consequences?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we have updated all of our standard operating procedures and kind of implemented a very intense employee training program where, where there, you know, where there's, there's no room for error. I mean, you know, they have to essentially be taking these tests, I mean, METRIC, for instance. METRIC has an online two-hour test that's option, or two-hour training program. METRIC is, as a reminder, is the seed-to-sale tracking system. It has an online two-hour, or two and a half hour, I think, training, training program that's optional for, for new bud tenders, is what they call the actual, you know, sales associates. You know, they have to pass it once when they get in the industry, and most, most times, people don't make them take that class again. We're making them take that class again. Not to mention when I, you know, I guess, this kind of seems like I'm continuing to make excuses, I did take the METRIC course, and it didn't actually mention the initial seed manifest, they had, they had not updated it. That said, it was in the code that anything transferred has to have a transportation manifest, and I, and I didn't read the code carefully enough to understand that. So we've updated all of our SOPs, we're doing intense employee training, and then we also, I think, you know, I think the, not only the fact that, you know, we're on probation and everybody knows that the MED is coming around very regularly, and these third-party compliance auditors, which, from our employees' perspective, they don't know that they're third, they don't know that they're third-party, they think that they're still, they think that they're MED. So, you know, they, you know, everybody's on their toes constantly, and it's, you know, it's, it's something that's just on the forefront of our brains 24/7 at this point. I mean, it's, it's been, it's, I mean, this, this, I mean, this investigation initially started in October, and, you know, based on the violations that were last July, and it's been nonstop since, you know, it's, it's definitely a learning experience.
My, you know, I just want to make, this particular issue is very important to me from a medicinal side point, you know?
Absolutely.
So I just want to make sure that if we were to, to grant this, that you have everything you need to not ever let this happen again.
And, and I firmly believe that I do, and I'd love to, I'd love to, you know, I know I said this the first time, and, and, you know, we never really made it happen, and I don't think you were actually on the board, on the board then, but I'd love to, you know, have you guys individually come by and kind of go over things, and, you know, really, I'd love to put you guys at ease, and I've always said this for, for concerned community members as well. If anyone has, if anyone is, has an issue and they think, you know, or a suggestion even, you know, I love, I do try to pride myself on, on being transparent and, you know, always answering my phone, always, you know, be willing to meet people at the store, at the grow, to, you know, to go over every little thing, and, and, you know, show them that we're, that we're doing everything in our power to stay in full compliance.
How long did you actually get to stay open before you were suspended?
So we opened medical in February of 2015, retail in March, and then, but we didn't get planting, because our cultivation facilities took forever to build out. I mean, you're, you're talking about building permits, certificate of occupancy, I mean, it's just a, it's a very arduous and long process. So we planted in July, and then, and then our suspension was New Year's Eve. So the investigation started in October, you know, they, you know, we planted in July, but the MED, they take a long time on everything, so they, they finally came around in October and said, I had actually, I wish that they'd come right away, because it would have been way less of a financial hit, I mean, you know, but either way, they did their, they did their investigation in October, and then the report made its way up the chain, where they kind of just read the violations and, and issue a suspension, and then, and then you go to the AG's office, which is who we kind of, you know, explain the situation to. We have back and forths, we have briefs. We never actually went to a hearing because we reached this settlement agreement, essentially.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your candor in being so honest about everything with us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Kim.
Hi, Aiden. I just want to echo Carol, thank you for always being upfront with this and coming into this, and just, you have been straight with us from the get-go. And this may be a question, a joint question for you and possibly Corey. I'm showing that your license expired March 23rd. Is that correct? Do we have provisions in our code for, you know, because here we are in May, and your application, you filed your application for extension in February, so it looks like you met some little concern, I'm not sure what our timeframe is, why it took three months to get to council. So again, it's kind of a piggyback question for all of you.
The application needs, the renewal application needs to be pending as of the renewal date it was. I'm not sure what the delay was in its entirety, but it certainly, he's met the requirements by filing the application on a timely basis.
Okay. I was just a little concerned about if there was any issues with that gap, and I'd like you to have another.
I was too, and I made very, I made very sure that we both, Lisa and the, and the state, you know, that we wouldn't be out of compliance. And I actually, I actually went down to the state, to the MP office, and had them review the North Bend code when we were, when they're going, and I think that's, they're calling you like three times in a row.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't getting another hit.
Yeah, no, no, I was, I was super worried about that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear motion?
I move to approve the application for renewal of the retail marijuana business license filed by AJO Holdings LLC, Doing Business as Natural Selections.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote. Thank you very much, Carol.
Hang on, guys, I'm messing it up again. Thank you.
The vote is closed, and the motion passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Escobal.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Please be advised that there are any license requests.
Thank you. All right. I'm a journey to marijuana licensing board and reconvening the regular council meeting. Next, we have discussion items.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to have Jason Loveland come up and talk about the draft 2017 budget calendar. Just a reminder, as outlined in the memo, pursuant to section 8.2 of the city charter, the city manager, prior to beginning of each fiscal year, shall submit to the city council the budget for said ensuing fiscal year and an accompanying message. So part of that reason for the discussion tonight is to outline the process we're going to follow, and I just want to mention a couple of things that we've talked about as a leadership team that we're going to implement. Excuse me. August 5th is a Friday, and we're going to get together for about a half-day and share information with each other. From what I've understood in the past, we've had individual meetings between the department director, the finance department, and the city manager to talk about budget enhancements or budget, budget packages for the following year, and we're going to do that in a joint meeting together, and we're going to share information across departments so that we understand what other people are requesting, see if there's some overlap there, making sure we're not duplicating those package requests. Then we'll follow that up with some one-on-one meetings the following week. So no change to the schedule in that regard, but just, I think, a good improvement that we're going to try to make this year. The second thing that is not noted on the calendar, but we may want to discuss tonight, I've identified August 29th as a fifth Monday, and although I know you're all probably looking forward to having that night off, I was going to make a proposal that we consider having a budget study session that night. It'd be the only item on the agenda, and rather than waiting until September, when we bring back all the budget packages and you see them for the very first time, it may give us an opportunity to kind of have a draft discussion with all of you before we get into the details and really into the throes of the schedule, which does have a pretty urgent deadline at the end of the year to get the budget done. So that's my opening remarks, but I'll let Jason kind of cover the highlights of the rest of the schedule.
Good evening, members of council.
So the, most everyone is familiar with the process, so there's a few people that have not been involved. So we're going to follow the same general process that we usually do, and that's to create a baseline budget when we go into the process, which essentially is the 2016 budget, so our current budget, less any one-time, you know, projects or studies or things that we're doing in kind of the operational side. So if finance had a one-time study being done, we would back that out of our, kind of our baseline. So we don't go through and say, everyone gets a 2% increase to their supplies account. We start with kind of the base. Once we establish that base, we'll send that out in June to each of the departments, and they're able to manipulate the numbers, you know, within their operating budgets as they, as they need. Manipulate is probably the worst word I've used up here in a long time. So allocate across line items their baseline budget, that's the more appropriate word, phrase to use. So that, as you can see from the calendar, takes, you know, the first six weeks or weeks
of the budget. We're also doing package requests at that time, so if or when there are one-time projects that need to be done, or increases to operational things just due to inflation over a period of time, each department will make that request in written form, kind of identify the reasons why, the amounts, and then, you know, provide alternatives, if there are any alternatives to be made, or alternative solutions with needs. A lot of these things occur with vehicle replacements, we'll see a lot of vehicle replacement requests. As we move through the process, you know, we spend about six weeks of staff kind of coordinating that, you'll see at the beginning of August, that kind moves to the city manager. We spend about six weeks between department directors, leadership, and the city manager kind of sorting out the requests and what we're planning for 2017. And then you'll see, as Jim had mentioned, August 29th is a possible date, you know, to first get council involved formally. September and October and November are kind of the key, the key times for council, where we'll present the budget for the first time September 9th, or actually, I think that's September 19th, you'll receive it September 9th. And then we'll go through departmental presentations in October, and then the first part of November, that we can discuss in more detail with you. So with that, we'll hopefully tie everything together. A public hearing will be held November 14th, and hopefully adoption on December 12th. So we hold the public hearing and then provide some time for feedback from that standpoint to make any changes before we finalize the document the first of December. So that is the draft calendar, and we can discuss the idea of the 29th, or we can follow up later.
Let's have a little discussion about it. Any questions or anything, or how does council feel about coming in on the fifth Monday of August? I think we need to get it done.
I agree.
Yeah, it's a good way to do it, so.
I, I-
And nothing else on the agenda besides that.
That's correct, that's my proposal.
And you're buying dinner, right?
Yes, sir.
Personally, because we don't have any money in the budget for you to buy us dinner, so you would buy us dinner.
I'm impressed by this, man, by the calendar and what you're doing, I like it.
I'm fine with the 29th, yeah, you know.
Okay, anything else? I think we're good, all right, Jim?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the Justice Center project, and that would be Jim May and Steve Grace, and I think it's just Steve.
As Steve's coming up, I just want to mention, we're going to have a much more detailed discussion in two weeks at the study session about the design, so not to steal his thunder, I'll let him get into those details.
Thanks.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and council, that's, that's the gist of it. Now, this is your regularly, regularly scheduled monthly update for the month of May on Justice Center, but as city manager pointed out, we are going to have a very comprehensive presentation for you. Two weeks from now, the lead architect is going to be out with some of his key staff, and we're going to really delve into the floor plan, site plan, explain how things are going to work, answer any questions you have, so you'll get a very good feel for the shape of the design at that point. So with that said, I do want to update you on our progress since the last time I spoke to you, at the end of April. It's been a good month, we, as far as costs go, there have been no adjustments to the design budget. As far as the design status, just about a month ago, at the end of April, we received the schematic design, which is the very rudimentary kind of one single line drawing of the facility. We had about two weeks for our staffs to review that, to provide feedback, and the 11th, 12th, and 13th of May, the lead architect and his staff came out, his subcontractors, and we had a very productive working session. Again, I think I mentioned to you last time when we actually said, you know, we really need to start trimming some fat and making some hard decisions, they were responsive, and again, when we looked at their design back at the first of this month, we said there are still some things we want to, not necessarily shrink, but rearrange, some different ideas. They used that three-day period to, to really listen to what we were saying, to offer us some suggestions, and I think we have a very good solution. So they went back to their office a little over a week ago, they're working on those changes now, and the material that you see presented in two weeks will reflect those changes. As far as the schedule update, the next big milestone, of course, will be that June 6th, the presentation, and sometime during that session, we would like to make recommendation as to what appropriate venue and presentation is for the public, so we can, after you've seen the information and understand the schematic design, we can kind of roll that out for the community, so we'll look through your guidance on that. The next stage, kind of three big steps, are that schematic design where you have a single line drawing, the phase they're working on now is called design development, and that's really, really kind of create a 3D model, they start putting the systems together, it becomes much more like you picture a facility designed to look like, and that's due to be complete by the end of June, or just after the middle of June, and they're certainly tracking toward that. And then the last piece, I think you're aware that we're trying to pursue C-MAR as the delivery method for this contract, we've had some success with that, and I think we're going to pursue that as quickly as we can so we can bring in that C-MAR general contractor while the design is still in this relatively early stage where it's a lot cheaper to fix things with that contractor's inputs on the front end than waiting until it's already designed and bring the contractor in. So that's what we're working on now, we'll have that full update for you shortly, but if any of you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Yes, Carol?
I just want to make sure that we're going to be getting that presentation prior to the June 6th, just so that we can review it and have questions prepared, rather than kind of trying to see it on the spot and ask questions.
Yeah, I understand, and we've sort of set a line in the sand for our architect to say, by the end of this week, just kind of stop what you're doing so you can give us that current design set so that we can have a package ready the week prior for your review.
Thank you.
Kim?
Steve, thanks for the update. What is the purpose of the public presentation? What are you hoping to get out of that? Is it simply, hey, look, this is what we're going to do, or are you wanting to get feedback? What are you trying to do with that public? I guess I have concerns over the whole going out to the public and asking their opinion, gee, would you like this color better or that color or whatnot, and I'm not real sure what the process is for this. You know, it's a very specific use, so it's not like a city hall where we're going to want public in and out, and they may be able to use the facilities and doing different things, this is a very, we know what we need it for, so I'm just wondering what the whole public presentation, what you're wanting to get out of that?
Yeah, I'd certainly appreciate your concern, and what I would certainly recommend against would be some kind of free-for-all where we just say, tell us what you want, and you start throwing things on the board. I think what we'd like to do is show them the plan we've developed as a city leadership team and working through you, and to explain the reasons why we're going down that road. But I think, and you're aware that back prior to the design award, we had some community meetings where we were able to address how this was going to fit in with the community to talk about concerns about noise, light, would there be egress out through Akoma Street, and by engaging the community at that point, we said, we hear your concerns, here's what we're doing about them, and I would picture a forum like that where we say, here's where we're going with this, here's why we made the decisions we did, but allow the community's voice to be heard. I would not offer up, you know, sort of a array of different finishes and colors and things like that, I think it's more just to have that opportunity for engagement before the project's fully designed and say, hey, this is what we're going to do.
And then, so we're going to do that before the project is designed, before council says, yes, that's the design we want, and then council's going to say, okay, yes, go forward with that, get your construction documents, start building, are we going to have another one then, and say, okay, this is your final presentation, or I just, I'm a little concerned about how many times we're going to get out there and what kind of delay it's going to be, this project has already been delayed much longer than what I wanted, and so I'm wondering how much more public outreach and public information, I mean, our means are public-
I don't anticipate any delay at all, we have the, the design schedule and the tentative construction schedule already established, we will work these public engagements into that schedule, we won't add to it or expand it out.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion?
I guess for me, I think the involvement, engagement of the public presentation is important, I know definitely from our constituents in Ward 3, we've heard, you know, they wanted to be involved, they want to hear where things are at, and they want to see it, especially those that live over in that area. I think we had a very productive meeting where I think you did a great job in presenting the information and fielding some conversation, and I just think it's really important, and as long as it doesn't hold up the process and it's moving things forward, I just, I would feel more comfortable having the process moving forward with residents clearly understanding it and seeing it than to not have them involved and look like we're just building a PD without them being involved.
And I think it's important as well, I think that we can't forget that this is their police department, this is their money that we're using to build it, it's, you know, and so if we're going to be doing that, we need to, I think, keep them involved in the process, so.
I mean, presentation-
I agree too, you have to keep everybody involved, they need to know what we're doing.
I guess I kind of see it going a little bit like when RTD has held some of the transportation meetings where it's kind of like they've had poster boards and it hasn't been terribly formal, but an opportunity for them to kind of like walk around, see it, ask questions, and engage, I guess I kind of see it a little bit more, is that what you envision as opposed to?
It's definitely something I want to have a conversation as a leadership team with you during the study separate, after you've seen the design and where things are going, say, what makes the most sense for our residents, what would, how could they be best engaged, and how can we convey the information we need to in sort of a controlled environment?
All right, any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is communications, and Kim, I'll start with you this time.
Nothing, thank you.
I attended the food truck carnival, which was extremely popular, and that was kind of the big thing I did, I just want to take this opportunity to offer huge kudos to staff for one, but also to council member Whitman, she was there all three days with, you know, serving beer, raising money for-
Serving beer.
I don't know that that makes any sense.
You know, raising money for our, for our community and, you know, wasn't the nicest weather on some of those days, and so I definitely think she, she deserves some recognition for that, so thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Joe?
We were at the food truck carnival also, it was tremendously successful, probably more successful than we ever anticipated, you know, so I'm looking forward to seeing what comes next, next year, so it will be interesting. We also went to the ribbon cutting over at Larson Park, and that was another very successful event, I think the residents over there are just really excited about what we have done to the park and provided the, not only fun equipment for the kids with the playground, but for seniors, you know, that they can actually exercise over there, and, you know, the landscaping is great, everything looked really good, and then a lot of compliments, a lot of compliments the other day, so.
Okay, I attended the last of the a cappella series, and it was Face on Friday evening. They've had a very successful run with the series this year, and the attendance was up, we got a little email from Michael Stricker today that said attendance was up 18% from 2015 for the entire series, so that's great. Total attended in all the shows was 1,060, so, you know, it's really a strong event, and it's amazing that it's still so popular and people, like, Face was sold out and there was a waiting list, people were standing outside and waiting to get in, I don't know how they thought that was going to happen, and I don't think it did happen, but that's kind of interesting, so, you know, that is definitely going to come back. I attended the candlelight vigil in EB Raines Park, it's a very important event, it's always very somber, but it's important to recognize the fallen officers in the state. Kim and I, and she didn't talk about it, and Antonio, we were all at the Almost Home Gala, and Almost Home is an organization that promotes self-sufficiency and provides housing assistance for those who need it. This year we were a sponsor for the event, and I'm really glad that we were a sponsor. It was a great event, and they actually recognized the city of Northland for becoming more involved and having a presence there this year, so that was really nice. Definitely money well spent for an organization that benefits the homeless, so. I also attended the roast of Judge Chris Melonakis, and that was hosted by CASA and Westminster Rotary 710. And Judge Melonakis, he's pretty well-known in Adams County, and he's retiring after 16 and a half years. I was not in the mood to go to the roast that night, that's all I have to say, but after I went, it was so entertaining, I think it's the best roast I ever went to, his roastees, or no, roasters, they were so funny, so it was really great, and he actually got to make a comeback at all of them at the end, which they weren't too happy about because they thought he shouldn't get the final word, but honestly, he's a really inspiring person, he's integral in starting the CASA program in Adams County and Broomfield Counties. 100% of the money raised that evening through silent auctions all went to serving the children through CASA, so it was a very good event to go to. I echo the mayor with Larson Park ribbon cutting, there were a lot of people there that day on Saturday, it was great, it was beautiful weather, the park is amazing, it showcases this great dinosaur-themed equipment for the kids, and the adult equipment is awesome, so really thanks to staff and the HEAL committee also for showing up that day and helping out.
Thank you.
I went to the, well, we went to the food truck carnival, and I had the most wonderful, unhealthy, salted caramel funnel cake, it was fantastic, can't wait for Pirate Fest, that's the next one I'm excited about, got my costume and everything, totally excited. Saturday, we went to the DOLA conference for planning commission, and I was very pleased, it was very informational for me, but I think the best thing was that for our planning commission, it was almost like a team bonding experience, you know, we were able to all, to just get together as people, you know, we all went out to lunch, we went for walks, it was very nice to work cohesively as a team with them, so I really did enjoy it, and I found it quite informative.
So I just need to talk about the food truck carnival real quick, it was very cold, so as counsel, very, very cold. But I really wanted to thank council for allowing the Northland Community Foundation the opportunity to be part of that and serving the beer. You know, the numbers aren't final yet, but we have a huge amount of money that came into the community foundation that's going to open up a lot of opportunities for us to do things for kids in, in Northland, to be able to continue to offer grants, and so, you know, I just want you all to know how important it is for us to be part of that, and to be able to do it for the Pirate Fest as well. So I'll definitely say that, and then along those same lines, I wasn't sure how it was going to go, because I received a lot of phone calls Wednesday when residents saw the food truck carnival being set up and a lot of concerns, and staff handled those really well, and it's really wonderful when those same residents who call and tell you that they're very concerned turn around and call you on Monday morning and say how much fun that they had, that they went over there, that they weren't concerned about the parking in their community, that they were, that they weren't concerned with the noise, they didn't have any of those issues, so I just want to say thank you to the residents that are in this surrounding area who hung in there with us and let us show them what a great event we could host without impacting their lives, and so I just really want to say thank you to those residents, and to all of the volunteers who also participated and staff who were also out there 12-hour days, I greatly appreciate that. And one last thing about the food truck carnival, when I went to the library board on Wednesday, one of the board members there acknowledged that Northland is really becoming a city that puts on great community events and that people are talking about, and that's one of the things that we've been striving at, so to actually hear that come from someone outside of, right here in Northland, I think it's huge. And lastly, I just, actually, I have two more things, sorry, so I just want to promote one thing that the Anything Library is doing, and that is that they're hosting a Beerology event on June 2nd, and the Great Divide owner is actually coming, doing some conversation around history of breweries, kind of getting involved, and they've done a really fun thing with their backyard concerts, and that is that their staff has been able to come up with a couple of names of beers in which people who come to the backyard concerts are going to be able to vote on the name, and then Great Divide is actually going to brew that beer with the Anything name on it, so it's just a really cool way to get their name out a little bit more. And then lastly, on Friday, I attended the Heroes Luncheon, and that's an opportunity to recognize our officers and our fire department for the contributions that they make, and it seems like every year, it's, we must send out a message that it should be the busiest day because it's hard for them to get there, so maybe we need to do like box lunches and like have them drive by and get their food since they're not able to join us, but it is a great event for those that can make it.
I'll pass.
All right.
Mike, I just wanted to tack on something since he's here. I just wanted to thank you for your comments on Facebook and refuting some of the, our comments. We had, one of our youth commissioners responded to several of the Facebook comments of negativity and pointed out how much fun it was and that everything wasn't negative. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Lisa.
Nothing.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items tonight from my report on Friday. The first one is the Adams County Fair has requested that the county become a, or the city become a contributing sponsor for the fair. Their request is for $2,500 and that information is in the, the report. And so I just would want to seek some direction tonight if that's something you think we should use some of our sponsorship money on. I did check with Susan. We do have that, those funds available. In the alternative, they would obviously take any kind of contribution that they could get and we can actually do some in-kind services like promoting it and the connections and things like that. So I just ask for your direction on that tonight.
All right. Any thoughts about it?
So I just have to say a really smart aleck comment in that, can they use the marijuana money that they take from our marijuana facilities as this? I mean, honestly, honestly, I, I get it, but yikes. That one hurts a little bit, so.
Is your tongue bleeding, Corey?
Yeah, he's not doing anything. But really, oh my goodness.
So Jim, how much money do we have in the sponsorship left?
Annually, there's a $10,000 budget for it. And right now, we have about $5,000 left.
For the entire year?
For the entire year. There are some things that have been committed for later in the year that we've already expended money on, but yeah, we're about halfway through that budget.
Gosh, it seems like we should be farther along than $5,000.
I think so too. We had the Chamber event, Almost Home, CASA, I think, no, we didn't do CASA, but the other one that we did for, just recently for-
Precious Child.
Yeah. All of those were at least $2,000. So we shouldn't have $5,000 left in the budget.
I can absolutely double check.
I'm wondering what maybe doing in kind, you know, being the connection or doing something else other than a monetary?
Is there a lesser amount than $2,500?
Specifically, they, they said they would accept cash as low as $1,000. But then they would, you know, want in-kind services if you're going to do anything below that, so.
And when do you have to have an answer for them?
Well, of course, they wanted as soon as possible, but I, we put them off until tonight at least, so.
They've never done this before, I don't think.
I know.
I don't recall.
When we go out there, they have the flags of the cities and everything within Adams County and I don't know if that has anything to do with sponsorship or if that's just them representing the municipalities within the county.
It, it may. It may have something to do with sponsorship.
You know, and so I said that smart aleck comment, but on the other side of it, I am definitely all about everybody working together for the good of everything. I really am. And we're stronger together than fighting over stupid things, so it's not a stupid thing. But I would definitely be on board for something, but maybe $2,500 is a little steep.
And, and again, that's why I brought it up tonight. I didn't feel comfortable that we would want to do it at that high a level. I can work with Amanda Peterson and we can come up with some in-kind information about what we can provide and I can, you know, include that in this Friday's report for you as well.
That'd be perfect. Yeah. And if we could check to see what the balance is.
Absolutely. I'll give you an update on that as well.
Yeah, all right. So is that clear enough direction or?
Yeah, I guess just to clarify, in-kind services, find out what our budget is and then if, if you choose to, we could still do cash if you wanted to, but we wouldn't decide that tonight.
Right.
Okay.
We got to check with Amanda.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, Jim?
Yes, the, the second item is a little more complex and we might want to table it for the budget discussion, but there was a sign here on crossing that was damaged and a, a call came in to, to one of the council members about it from a resident. We did a lot of research out there and the bottom line is that there, there looks, appears that there was a vehicle that hit the, the sign. So technically, the car owner or the driver's insurance should be responsible, but there was never a police report filed, so we have no idea who did it. Typically, these types of signs would be handled by the homeowners association and be responsible to repair it. The homeowners association was dissolved in 1999. And on top of all that, the property or the sign is in the public right-of-way. So we have several options, one of which, of course, is do nothing. But I think we might want to have a discussion that we don't have it tonight about, you know, should we remove the sign? Should we consider budgeting to rebuild it? Should we try to work with the residents in there to do some kind of special assessment that we could help them coordinate? I guess I'm just looking for maybe some discussion about this.
Does it need to be rebuilt or? Because I, when I drove by, was missing some bricks at the bottom. I saw that where it was damaged at the bottom. Does it need to be rebuilt?
So I went and looked at it. This call came in to me and I'm not a masonry, but it does seem like it could be easily patched and repaired with some bricks.
At the bottom, yeah.
I don't think it's like we're talking a complete redo, but it doesn't look fabulous. It's kind of noticeable.
We did have a volunteer that said they had some bricks too, that we could even get materials, so.
It just needed the skill set.
Just get it fixed.
Which I don't have.
Okay.
I, I like the sign. I like what it does for that community over there. I like the entry that it does.
We need to get it done, yeah.
Well, I mean, one of our number one goals is a beautiful city and we're sitting here-
It is a sign that you see when you go into the office complex. I mean, it, it is right there for everybody who's going to like the Dunbar escape room and everything. I mean, it's pretty, it's not like it's hidden.
Right. Yeah, I, I would be in favor of.
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll reach out to that, that resident. I think you gave me their name. I'll, I'll reach out to them directly and, and see what we can put together, so. Okay. Thank you. That was it for tonight.
Corey?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is public invite. If you heard three minutes per speaker, comments should be related to an item previously addressed by the council during this meeting. Is there anyone that we wish to speak to council for up to three minutes? Seeing no one to approach, we're going to adjourn into executive session pursuant to section 4.5 parant D of the City of Northland Home Real Charter for legal consultation and advice regarding both the wastewater treatment plant and regarding regulating city rights of way. Two, pursuant to section 4.5 parant E of the City of Northland Home Real Charter regarding pending litigation. And three, pursuant to section 4.5 parant G of the City of Northland Home Real Charter for negotiations concerning the potential acquisition of real property and contracts except those required to be the subject of competitive bidding.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
The vote is closed and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now in executive sessions.